Hello, everyone. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. It's 5:30 on March 24th, which is the advertised time and day for this meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. All right, tonight here for staff, we have Dylan Pippenich, Planning Director, Lila Osborne, Senior Planner, and Robin Smith, Secretary. Now a call for a roll call of the board members.
Mike McLeod.
Here.
Denise Anderson.
Here.
Matt Steitzer.
Here.
Julie Jackshaw.
Here.
Bart Riley.
Here.
Josh O'Neil.
Here.
Jeremy Sally.
Here.
Tim Shrapps.
Here.
Bill Daley.
Here.
All right, cool. Anyone have any questions on last month's meeting minutes? Any corrections? All right, someone like to approve last month's minutes? Billy make the motion. Is there a second? A second from Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Was this meeting advertised to the public?
Mr. Chairman, both public hearings were advertised.
All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is the Aware Inc. major subdivision, an application by Steve Francisco, owner of Aware Inc., and Lynn Edens of Montana Northwest Company, to create nine lots from the Aware Inc. property, eight of which will be residential with a single-family townhome for the clients that Aware Inc. serves. The 3.33 acre property is located south of the Berkeley Pit in Continental Drive, Farrell Street, north of Pine Street, west of Adams Street, and east of Howard Street. The eight residential lots are proposed to be 6,000 square feet each, while the ninth lot is proposed to be 97,062 square feet and contains stormwater infrastructure. All residential lots are proposed to be serviced by public roads, water, and sanitary sewer. All right, could we have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first presentation tonight is for the Aware Inc. major subdivision preliminary plat. The proposal is for nine lot major subdivision. The applicant is Steve Francisco, the owner of Aware Inc., as well as Lynn Edens and Ken Jenkins from Montana Northwest Company. The subdivision proposes eight residential lots and one remainder lot, as well as eight single-family townhomes. This is not a for-profit residential subdivision, but is to serve the clients of Aware. The property is owned and proposed by Aware Inc., which is a Montana nonprofit that offers support to people with mental health and/or developmental disabilities and families with children ages zero to eight. The proposal also submits a variance request to the Butte-Silver Bowe subdivision regulations, Section 12, curbs. Curb is proposed to be installed on Pine Street, but the applicants request a variance for installation of curb and gutter on Continental Drive or Farrell Street. Here's an aerial image of the lot. And here's the zoning. It's currently zoned R4, and it's just south of the Berkeley Pit up here. The comprehensive planned place type, which designates future objectives of land use in the city and county, is suburban mix, which is intended for mixed residential and community-scale development. The mixed-use nature of these areas acts as somewhat of a buffer between traditional neighborhoods and commercial uses. It also meets the goals of the comprehensive plan, such as infill development, and to provide a range of housing opportunities. Here is an image of the plat with the nine lots proposed. And here are some more general images. This is the Aware Building, and the rest of the lot is just east of it. And here is a view looking west, so this grassy lot. Here's looking northwest, and you can see the Aware Building, their bus barn, which currently is on their lot. So this major subdivision proposes eight residential lots, each which are 6,000 square feet, and the remainder lot nine is approximately 2.23 acres and is proposed to hold the stormwater retention pond, which should hold the 100-year 24-hour storm. It also proposes single-family townhomes, which when considered at the time of subdivision, the side yard requirement, as these townhomes share one wall each, is exempt. The subdivision proposal was advertised in the Montana Standard and by boards near the site. There are seven criteria for which subdivisions are reviewed, and I will go over the most relevant here. First is effects on local services. All of these residential lots shall be serviced by public roads and utilities. All new access for the residential lots will be to Pine Street, pictured here, and built to Butte-Silver Bowe standards. A water main extension has been approved for a new hydrant on Pine Street to serve the subdivision. And parkland dedication has been approved by the Butte-Silver Bowe Parks and Rec Board for cash in lieu of $5,978.53. This is instead of dedicating actual parkland, it gives the equivalent funds to the board to make improvements in the area to existing parks. Second is effects on natural environment. The subdivision is not within any floodplain, but is near floodplain to the north. The applicants have also provided a sufficient noxious weed management plan to Butte-Silver Bowe standards, so noxious weeds should not be an issue for the natural environment due to the subdivision. Effects on public health and safety. Studies have shown that adequate capacity for water, sewer, and roads exists to serve the proposal, but it's important to keep in mind the impacts of development on future capacity. There are no proposed sidewalks for this residential subdivision. The subdivision proposes one single-family dwelling per 6,000 square feet, which is compatible with the density and the lot size requirements of the zone that it's in, R4. It's within the Butte-Silver Bowe Police and Fire District, and our Butte-Silver Bowe Fire Marshal has approved the new hydrant on Pine Street. Pictured here are the easements for utilities that are on the lots. The subdivision regulations require 10-feet easements on the rear and side of lotlines, where practical, but as townhomes share a wall and a lotline for the subdivision, instead the proposal is to have 20-foot easements on the front and the rear. This also satisfies Northwest Energy's request for front-of-lotline easements instead of sides. Lot nine has the proper easements, 10 feet on front sides and rear. I will now review the variance request. So the planning board shall make a recommendation to the Council of Commissioners to deny, approve, or conditionally approve of the variance request in concert with their recommendation on the preliminary plat. The applicants request a variance to Butte-Silver Bowe subdivision regulations, Section 12D, which is curb. The variance is to install, is to not install curb and gutter on Continental or Farrell Street, but there is proposed curb and gutter on Pine Street. There are three main criteria for evaluating a reasonable variance, which I will do in the next slides. The first is undue hardship. So in the case of a variance, hardship refers to a circumstance which is related to the conditions unique to a specific property, which make it unfairly difficult or impossible to comply with rules and regulations. An example would be the presence of watercourses or steep slopes, which may prevent someone from meeting sideyard setbacks if they have to build around one of these natural features. Or after-the-fact imposition of regulations on previously lawful lots, or a government action outside of the owner's control. Financial expense of ordinarily required improvements is not considered a hardship. The second criteria is would not be contrary to public interest. Section 12D in our subdivision regulations require all subdivisions to construct integral curbs and gutters onto adjacent streets to Butte-Silver Bowe standards. The intent of this is to ensure that new development in the community contributes to reasonable and necessary improvements to the surrounding area and which is still exist, and to prevent future issues, which are not contemplated at this time. Any necessary improvements which are not installed on this new development may become the responsibility of Butte-Silver Bowe and its taxpayers, and these types of improvements are constructed slowly throughout the community. Continuing on this point, sidewalks are a requirement of subdivision in all residential zones, except for the R4 for unknown reasons. Our comprehensive plan states that these roads and these suburban-mixed neighborhoods should have sidewalks, as well as road improvements, including curb and gutter. Curb and gutter would be the minimum improvement necessary for subdivision to contribute to the potential of Continental Drive or Farrell Street on this stretch. Finally, the third criteria is would not create any public health and safety concerns. There are no current plans for development of Lot nine, but future development on the remaining 2.23 acres outside the stormwater easement would not be subject to subdivision review, which means that zoning requirements and the review process for future development would not require curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The applicants state that stormwater from Farrell Street runs onto this parcel, which could create drainage issues for potential future property owners of Lot nine. And again, while there is no proposal for development on Lot nine at this time, avoiding potential future issues like these is the intent of subdivision review. Additionally, Continental is a connectivity corridor between Uptown and the Flats. McGruff Park also is just to the northwest of this neighborhood, which Aware is a part of, and safe multimodal access is lacking between both. Finally, my recommendations and conclusions from planning staff, except for curb and gutter on Farrell Street and Continental, this subdivision does satisfy zoning and subdivision requirements. Staff recommends approval of the Aware Inc. subdivision preliminary plat with denial of the variance, but subject to the following conditions. And I will now read a long list of conditions. Staff recommends approval of Aware Inc. subdivision, subject to the following conditions. This preliminary plat is good for three years. At the end of this period, the governing body may, at the request of the subdividing entity, extend this timeframe. Second, the final plat shall conform to the requirements of the Butte-Silver Bowe subdivision regulations and the requirements of the Montana subdivision and plating act, which includes certification by the treasurer, that taxes are paid, and current. Prior to applying for final plat approval, the applicant shall submit required documentation for review and secure written approval from the Butte-Silver Bowe Public Works Department for the following public infrastructure. A, compliance with all sections of Chapter 12.4, Construction Within the Public Right-of-Way of the Butte-Silver Bowe Municipal Code, which includes design specifications for curb and gutter and potential future sidewalk. Should the preliminary plat be revised to include curb and gutter, Montana Department of Transportation has requested to review and comment on the design, as well as the stormwater management plan. B, compliance with sections of Chapter 13.4, Waste Water Treatment System. C, compliance with all sections of Chapter 13.20, Water Systems Regulation, including main extensions and material specifications. D, compliance with sections of Chapter 13.32, Stormwater Management, including Butte-Silver Bowe municipal stormwater engineering standards. In addition, all municipal main extensions and stormwater plans must be approved by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality prior to submitting the final plat application. Condition number four, the applicants will be required to complete all the public infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to sanitary sewer, water, roads, curb and gutter, road signs, cash in lieu of parkland, as applicable prior to applying for final plat approval or to enter into a subdivision improvement agreement. The agreement shall stipulate which type of security arrangements the subdivision entity elects to use and the time schedule proposed to accomplish the required improvements. The security guarantee shall be equal to the amount of the cost estimate to install the infrastructure improvements plus 25 percent. The guarantee must be submitted to the planning department prior to filing the final plat with the Butte-Silver Bowe clerk and recorder. This guarantee may be in the form of cash, surety bond, certified check, or some other guaranteed negotiable instrument. Prior to the release of the bond, the as-built drawings for the infrastructure, including the location of the private utilities, shall be submitted as a condition of acceptance. As required by the Butte-Silver Bowe subdivision regulations, Section 12L, a weed control plan shall be approved by the weed board prior to applying for final plat. Also as required, the applicants must submit a bond equal to the amount of money necessary to complete the approved weed control plan. This bond may be in the form of cash, surety bond, certified check, or other guaranteed negotiable instrument. The applicants shall be required to secure all applicable permits maybe necessary to make improvements in or near designated wetlands or surface water bodies, including but not limited to stormwater discharge construction permit from the MDEQ Stormwater Program, and floodplain development permit from Butte-Silver Bowe County, a 310 permit from Mile High Conservation District, and a 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. Seven and final, prior to applying for final plat, the applicants shall pay all fees associated with administration of the preliminary plat review. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll take questions from the board to planning staff about the application. All right, oh, go ahead. Okay, I have a couple of questions. So the recommendation is to, the staff recommendation is to recommend approval, given the fall, given the conditions for approval? So if they, if we, if we give them a preliminary plat for three years, can you describe the process, what happens in three years? Can they be in a preliminary plat status forever?
Mr. Chairman, so the state law and subdivision regulations allow preliminary plat to be good for three years. They can ask for a year extension, and I believe they can ask for more than one. But the goal is to, by granting conditional approval of the preliminary plat, it gives them a guaranteed path forward. If they complete the conditions, then they can get final plat.
And can you describe what it means to get final plat?
That's when the land actually comes divided, so.
Okay. Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Chairman, the four lots with...
Thank you. That a boy. The four lots with the townhomes, are they exempt from the normal footprint? Did you follow what I'm saying? They're only 6,000 feet. I thought a townhome needed X amount, a duplex needed X amount.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, so there's eight lots. So each side of the townhome would have 6,000 square feet, the requirement for a single-family home. So in this instance, because they're contemplated at subdivision, townhomes are considered single-family homes. So these aren't considered a duplex. Basically, each building will have 12,000 square feet with a lot line down the middle.
Mr. Sally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess Dylan and maybe the applicant can answer this one, they get a chance to speak, but I was looking at the variance request and reading that first paragraph, and it says it is planned the curb with the option for future sidewalk will be installed along Pine Street. So I'm not talking about Farrell, I understand Farrell, but that makes it sound like all that we're proposing is a curb and maybe a sidewalk will go in along Pine Street? And kind of the follow-up to that is looking at the subdivision plat and realizing this, it's not a final drawing, but the curb doesn't, I don't see the curb like going the whole distance along Pine Street in front of all eight lots, so just kind of wondering what the plan is there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Sally, so for some reason, the subdivision regulations list the residential zones in which sidewalk, curb, and gutter are required. Sidewalk is a different section than the curb and gutter section. Curb and gutter is required in all residential zones, and for some reason sidewalk is only a requirement in the R1, the R2, and the R3 zone. And the R4S zone. So the only residential zone that's not required for sidewalk is the R4. I would note that on a previous submitted plat during the sufficiency review, the applicants did have sidewalk on Pine Street, but was removed before the sufficiency review was complete.
Are there any more questions for staff? All right, at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and provide testimony to Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Ken Jenkins. I'm president of Montana Northwest Company, and we're representing Aware in this process. I would like to thank Dylan and Lila for their efforts in guiding us through the process up to this point. I really am in agreement with everything about the staff recommendation, with the exception of the variance request on Farrell, or I always want to call it Continental. This property is, and the abutment of this property to Continental Drive is kind of a different animal than your typical residential neighborhood. The boundary of the residential zone that this property is in comes to an end at Farrell Street. Across the street is a commercial, industrial, if you will, part of the mine. The other thing that is unusual, I guess, about this, different than your typical residential neighborhood, is Farrell and Continental Drive are a Montana Department of Transportation-designed highway, essentially, on the edge of a residential zone. And when we were just moments ago discussing the criteria for a variance, it struck me that part of that is actions taken by the government that are beyond the control of the applicant. So I don't know that Aware or whoever owned that property at that time had a whole lot of input into the design of Continental Drive. It was purposely designed without curb, gutter, and sidewalk, the entire length of it. The drainage for the road is not currently a problem for anyone. It is designed to mostly shed slope water, and certainly on this piece of property, it is functioning perfectly right now. The addition of curb has no benefit to the applicant, no benefit to the public. It just happens to be a requirement in the subdivision regulations within a residential zoning district. I would almost question whether or not is the road itself considered to be within the zoning district or not. It ends, the district ends there somewhere, and it's unclear to me whether or not that road, obviously, the residential property abuts that right-of-way. But, so to start with, I guess my point is that Farrell is an unusual hardship to a residential development in that it really wasn't designed as a residential street. It was designed to move traffic and move mostly commercial-related traffic that had to do with mining activities. As far as like, if the variance were approved, you know, potential future problems because the road does drain onto the subject property, we have a grading and drainage plan that is, I believe, approved by DEQ that is designed to compensate not just the runoff from the subdivision itself, from the residential lots that all front on Pine Street, but it is also designed to more than handle any water that would come off of Farrell. It's already going there, so that amount of water is incorporated into the design. And then I would like to just speak from a level of practicality, and I mentioned it The subdivision that we're contemplating today is not your typical residential subdivision, where you can build infrastructure costs into the price of the houses, or build infrastructure costs into the price of the residential lots that you're creating. In this case, it's a nonprofit who is doing this. These are not homes that will be for sale, and I think that's a distinction between what we would all consider a residential subdivision. The fact of the matter is that the lack of curb on Farrell right now has no negative impact on the subject property whatsoever. It has no negative impact to the public. If we put curb there, there would be no apparent advantage for the public or benefit to the public. I think that, I think that something like the entire length of Continental Drive, if we look at that, if there was an effort or a need to have curb on that road, it should be the entire thing. What I'm afraid of is we're going to build 600 feet of curb, and there will always be 600 feet of curb on Continental Drive. I don't think it would be a well-thought-of expenditure of public funds to put curb on a road that is functioning just fine right now. These are just practical things that I would hope that would be considered. As an alternative to denying the variance, I think a, maybe a better way would be to say that we'd be willing to waive the right to protest, an SID, if there was a more comprehensive need for curb on some larger stretch of Continental Drive, based on need. I don't, I think that would be a fair way to look at this, is if for some reason drainage got to be an issue, and if it was necessary to have curb, that these guys would waive the right to protest, an SID. So that's really about all I'd have to say. I'd just like you to consider some of those things. I know that Steve Francisco is in attendance tonight and might have a few words about this as well. Thank you, and I'm available for any other questions, too.
Thank you. One second, sir. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. So this will be the first call for proponents, so these are... this will be the first call for proponents. So these are people in favor of approving this, approving this recommendation. First call for proponents. Please state your name and address.
Steve Francisco, 224 Ramsey Anaconda. Mr. Chairman, rest of the board, thanks for letting me speak. Ken makes a point that it's really not a typical subdivision, and it isn't. We aren't developers. We are in the business of trying to provide people with mental health disabilities or developmental disabilities with a safe, comfortable, quality home. These are two-bedroom units that we're referring to tonight. And so as we go forward, the, the comment was made concerning the sidewalk on the initial drawing that Dylan had reviewed in the sustainability, or one of his reviews, and that it isn't there that now. We aren't required to put that in there. To be honest with you, we're not in a position to do, sometimes we have the same budget requirements that everybody else does, and say, where can we best apply our funds? And the curb gutter on Continental, basically being the only place on Continental, I shouldn't say only, but a large portion of it without it, costs us money, and it's got to come from somewhere. We certainly would much rather be putting sidewalk and encouraging people to walk on Pine than we would be to be putting curb and gutter on Continental. But it's a, it's a great project, I guess. I would appreciate your consideration of the variance again. We're excited, we're hopeful that we can get kind of across the finish line and, and provide some housing. We aren't immune to the same thing that everybody else feels every day here. The housing crunch, supply chain issues, you name it, we feel it as an organization as well, and we have in the state an awful lot of people that could, with mental health and developmental disabilities, in need of some quality housing. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Second call for proponent, proponents.
Good evening. My name's John Sorge. I'm the district, that sounds right in my eyes. My name's John Sorge. I'm the commissioner for District Four for that district, and you know, I'm going to say that I'm a proponent for this project also. You know, that property over there needs a lot of work. You know, there's a lot of fill, there's a lot of, so I'm really glad to see somebody that's willing to take this project on. I believe aware is a quality outfit, and I think they'll can do a good job. What was really interesting to hear is that there is a plan for some drainage. You know, I get phone calls yearly from people down on the next block that are getting flooded out on Pine Street. You know, there's, when it snows, whenever it, it never fails, I'll get four or five phone calls from folks that are, need, need some help, or they're wanting something done. So it's kind of interesting that they have a plan, you know, or they have a design of some sort to maybe fix the drainage. But again, I'm, I'm going to say I'm a proponent, and I'm just kind of glad that something's been done with that piece of property.
All right, last call for, for proponents. All right, at this time, we'll take calls for any opponents.
I have quite a lot to say about this.
All right, could you state your name?
Yes, yes. My name is Larry Winstall. I own two houses on Pine Street. One of them is at the corner of Pine and Adams, very close to where you're going to do this. You have this study, and, and you claim that this is good for the public, but you've never talked to the public. Our neighborhood has our own council, the Greeley Coalition, which your commissioners voted against. In Butte Silver Bow Charter, the second item is the commissioners have the power and the duty to authorize community councils. We've been after this for a decade, and you absolutely refuse. This particular thing would have been much better taken to a community council. So I've talked with my community council members, and they have very big concerns about the environment. It's not just a little dust from the mine. It blows up huge clouds. It coats everything. You know, if you want to have a patio, or a picnic table, or lawn chairs, you can't even sit down in them. They're going to be covered with gray stuff. There are three ongoing health studies about this, so there you got your health risk. The second item is those two hideous billboards, which have no business in a residential area. I complained about one you were going to put up, and you said if I didn't like it, I could sue you. So there we have it. This is not townhomes. This is an apartment building. This is one unit with eight, one building with eight units. And it sounds like it's going to be low-income. It doesn't look like its owner occupied, so I'm against that. There's a lot wrong with this lot, as other people have mentioned, and I'd like to get in, now that we've kind of covered the basic problems with the lot, I'm concerned about the height of the buildings. It will really look out of place on a street and neighborhood of single-story bungalows and mobile homes. This, this thing's probably going to be 40 feet in the air. I don't know, we don't know. We don't know what it's going to look like. I don't see adequate parking. And there is a hazard pulling out on Farrell. It's a very busy street. People go up in town. It's a main artery going to Uptown. You've got people pulling in and out of there. That could be a problem. Then we get on to the infrastructure problems of the neighborhood. I'm totally dissatisfied with the storm changes you made. The stormwater upgrades, or whatever, they don't work. The grading of the street is wrong. The water goes right past it, down into the alley. You paved over crumbling water main. The water mains under that new pavement have been patched 20 times. It, it's, it's a semi-annual thing, digging up the street. And, you know, you mentioned McGruff Park. Could you picture a kid walking from those apartments down Farrell, past all that fencing to get to the skateboard park? That's, I don't think you people are thinking. What we want back is the Greeley playground, where kids can ride a bike to it. They can play. It's big enough. It was zoned, planned, at Silver Bow Park. We want it back. We got robbed. The kids got nowhere to play. You look around, just within a block of where you want to build, there's basketball hoops, three or four of them jutting out into the street. The Greeley Coalition, I'm committed to this neighborhood. I own two houses. Mr. Francisco keeps making me offers on everything I own, but that's all right. I'm all for affordable housing. I have a critical need for it, and, but I don't think this is what we want. We don't want low-income apartments in our neighborhood. We want people that want to stay and be part of the community. We want to improve the community, which is contrary to what the commissioners want, and it's, it's just a, it's just a struggle. We're going in two different directions. We want to improve the green space and the playground. We want to make the neighborhood more livable before you add more units. And I don't see that. I don't see intelligent reinvestment. I see a lot of private investment in these little homes. People buy them. Their prices are just going to the roof. I own several. I'm glad I bought them when I did. But people are constantly putting a lot of money in these little houses and fixing them up. We want to keep it a neighborhood, a community, and we want a little respect from the commissioners. We want them to authorize our community council, and, and we want to be the people advising you, the people that actually live. Do any of you live in the Greeley or on Pine Street?
So I just remind you, just to address your comments to the chair.
You need, you need a connection to the neighborhood. You need to make this connection. On this particular lot, I'm very concerned about the drainage, because my house is like two or three houses away. The house next to me, the slab in his garage collapsed. So there's something going on. He had to report a slab. There's something going on that you don't know about, about the conditions of the soil, the drainage, like I said, the stormwater upgrade was botched, and I'm very concerned about what's underneath there. I think that I would approve and be a proponent of this if it was more in keeping with the neighborhood, something that people could buy and be proud of, and be part of our community. Okay, thank you.
All right, second call for opponents. Third call for opponents. All right, this time, we will ask the applicant to come up if they'd like to, to provide any further comments, if you want.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Francisco, Ana, with the ware. The comment, just a couple points of clarification. The comment concerning the height of the building, these are all single-level structures, nine-foot sidewalk construction, so, and there are in fact four structures to, that we are looking to put on the property. Each one has two individual living units. It sits on its own 60-foot lot, so, just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, and we'll open it up, open it up to board discussion. Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself and throwing this out to the board. The, let me clarify, they're not required to do sidewalks because it's R4, just curb. Mr. Pippenich or Ms. Osborne, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, that's correct. In the subdivision regulations, curb and sidewalks are two different sections. Curb is required in all residential zones. Sidewalk is excluded from the R4.
Mr. Chairman, just speaking for myself to the applicant, I, I agree on the curb on Farrell Street, that I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating that, but I, this isn't probably going to save you any money, but the continuation on Pine that already has curb and gutter, I think it would be, I'm sorry? Yeah, that's, it has sidewalks, I'm sorry, curb, gutter, sidewalks behind your existing property. We extended that to the east to border your property on the south. It seems like that would be a good tie-in to the neighborhood versus having the curb on Farrell. So I don't know if that, I'm explaining myself to everybody, but that's, that's what I would like to see, and I think it would fit well with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daley.
I would just like to mirror the, the comments that Mike is making. I think that would be, the sidewalk in lieu of the curb on the Farrell Street side would, would be in, in favor with the neighborhood. My niece also lives down there, and the drainage issue is very real in the wintertime, so I guess, I'm not clear on the drainage, what's going to happen with this property and how, how that will address it, or if there, if there is a, an upgrade to the drainage system as well.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Daley, so their, their stormwater retention plan addresses onsite stormwater drainage created from their development only, and they have a retention pond plan on that ninth lot. So it would, it would not affect any drainage in the area at all. The only, the only thing that would, would be curbing, of course, direct storm drainage from the street, and keeps it on the street and not run on, on the property.
I have a comment and a question. First, on the comment, I would agree with Mr. McLeod and Mr. Daley about sidewalks. If you could consider sidewalks to continue for the building that you already have, I think it'd be a good improvement to the neighborhood. My question to staff, when, when reviewing the variance, on item three, you make the point that Lot 9 is not, is not, has no plans for development at this time, but it's 2.23 acres that future development could occur. Being the planning staff, planning board, we, we look to plan for 100 years into the future. If that Lot 9, that's 97,000 square feet, were to be developed in the future, and there was no curb and gutter, is it correct that there would not be a further review at that time, so we couldn't require a curb and gutter at that time?
Mr. Chairman, so if the lot were to stay the same size and not go back through subdivision, that's where that curb and gutter requirement is. So if they were to just obtain a building permit for residential use on that lot, zoning does not require the addition of sidewalk, curb, and gutter. So that would, that would remain curbless.
So just to clarify, so the risk of not requiring curb and gutter on Farrell Street would be that in the future, if there was development on the Farrell stride, Farrell Street side of this lot, that future development could occur without any curb. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Yes, Ms. Jackshaw.
I have a question for Mr. Pippenich. Do we know right now if there's an issue with water drainage on the Continental or the Farrell side of that street? Do we have any, any information on that?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jackshaw, so currently, and through the subdivision process, our Public Works Department was consulted. They all commented, and you'll see that in your staff report, that they would like curb. They would actually like sidewalk, curb, and gutter, of course, but the issue is that stormwater from Farrell Street does drain onto the property. That stormwater is actually the responsibility of, of Montana Department of Transportation at this time, but the goal for our Public Works Department is always to keep stormwater from streets in the street and off of private property.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question for Dylan on, so if we were to move forward and have the curb gutter and sidewalk on Pine Street, take away the curb on Farrell, what was the, I think, I don't know if it was Mr. Francisco or the fir, I'm sorry, mentioned that they'd sign a SSID. I probably wrote it down wrong. So they couldn't come back on the county. You know what I'm saying, right? That's, is that a good idea? Great recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Neil, what they were referring to is if there was a special improvements district created in the neighborhood that they would participate. A special improvements district is where the neighborhood taxes are increased to install infrastructure, to pay for that infrastructure. There's also, Butte Silver Bow also has a sidewalk program where Public Works installs sidewalk curb and gutters in areas, and we also have ongoing stormwater infrastructure upgrades in areas. But the specific special improvement districts that they were referring to were, you increase taxes in an area to install the infrastructure until that infrastructure is paid off.
I guess I just took it as, I forgot your name, you spoke first, I'm so sorry. No disrespect. I, thank you. You'd ma-, I felt like you're saying, hey, if we, if we don't have to put the curb on Farrell Street, and then if we were to say, throw the sidewalks and curb and gutter on Pine, that if something happened drainage in that property, that the county wouldn't be liable. I may have dreamt that as I was sitting here. I apologize if I did, but I could have heard that wrong. If I, if I did, I'm so sorry.
Could you come up and address that comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. got to find a place to hide here. This is fine. So the SID concept would be that if there was a comprehensive plan to do curb on all of Continental, let's say, or of a mile of it, it's called a waive the right to protest. In other words, this property would participate. Anytime there's an SID, there's a percentage trigger on the protest end that can kill the SID. And, and where the neighborhood decides, no, none of us want to participate. And so this would just be a box checked in the yes column upfront. That if there was a larger, more comprehensive plan or a need to put curb on Continental, that they would be willing to participate. As to the concept of sort of swapping out, rather than spending $25,000 or $30,000 on curb up on Continental that really doesn't have any apparent benefit. As to the idea of, instead of doing that, why not put that money into sidewalk along Pine? I'm not at liberty to make that decision. That would be something that AWARE would need to think about, but I mean, it would make common sense. If the money had to be spent, that would be a better place to spend it.
Mr. Sally.
This question's for staff, for Dylan. You had said that Public Works had, had, was consulted, and that they had suggested to put in curb gutter. Not being able to talk to them, I just, I wonder where that would go. There's no stormwater system on Farrell, so I'm assuming it just goes down Farrell and then down Howard? Do you know Dylan by chance if there was any thought given to that? Just from my own curiosity.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sally. So if you realize in the, or if you notice in the conditions of approval at the subdivision review meeting, MDT stated that if Butte Silver Bow was to require sidewalk, curb and gutter, and they were a proponent of it, they would have to go through their study process to see where that stormwater goes.
One more question for staff. Can you, are there any known risks for having, not having curb and gutter on Farrell Street should development occur at a later date? Can you speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the intent of curb and gutter is to direct stormwater. This is a unusual case because it's usually accompanied by sidewalk, but it would be in the right of way, so that the sidewalk is something that Butte Silver Bow could install at some point if they, if they ever had the, the money. But the intent of the curb and gutter is to keep the stormwater from the street on the street.
Thank you. Mr. McLeod.
A question for Mr. Pippenich. I could give you a couple hypotheticals here. We'll put Mr. Francisco on the spot here. He doesn't have to decide, but let's say hypothetically that he says, I'll do the curb and gutter, or the sidewalks and that on Pine Street, if he agrees to do that. And can we approve the variance with that stipulation, or do we have to just either approve or disprove? That was my first question. And my second one is, is if he can't answer that tonight, which is understandable, if we denied the variance, could he come back and say, okay, in lieu of? Do you follow where I'm going? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pippenich.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, so there's two questions in front of you tonight. One is the subdivision itself, and one is the variance request. And the planning board is a recommendation board to council. So whatever you decide tonight isn't final, there goes another public hearing at council. So if you recommend that, that is a recommendation to the council commissioners that will make a, a final decision. It would be up to the applicant. There's a provision that they can change their, their proposal between the planning board hearing and the council hearing may require further review from a, from a subdivision review standpoint. But there's a whole section in the subdivision regulations depending on if it's a substantial change of, if they change their proposal after this hearing, but before the council hearing. Does that answer your question?
It does. So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Francisco what your thoughts are? You don't have to make a decision, but just on that scenario?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, we would certainly be happy to take a hard look at that, really. In our mind, it makes a whole lot more sense trying to get people up and down Pine than Continental, so we would, while I can't say, hey, yay, let's get with Dylan and get a change, right now, I can tell you that come tomorrow morning, we'll be having a conversation about it, so.
So we've got two votes before us. First is the subdivision, and second's the variance.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, yes, you need to recommend on, on both to the council commissioners, and both can be conditionally approved. Or.
But we're going to vote on one and then the other.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. If the proposed change to the variance sounds like if we go the route of swapping out the sidewalks for the curb, would we deny that then? That variance and how, rewrite a different variance for that? Because, I mean, I, I personally would like to see the curb installed on Farrell Street. I think it's important as we move forward in the community. But I'm really excited about the sidewalks, too. So, I don't know how I'd get both in there. But I, that, that would be my vote, so I don't know how I would handle that.
Mr. Pippenich.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jackshaw, so you can recommend conditional approval of the variance and, and condition it if you would like.
Mr. Shapps.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. I'm, I'm, so I, I guess so the section of, of Farrell Street, Continental, that, that the curb and gutter is required for the one little section as, as the water would be running from, from east to west, I believe, correct? In theory. If there was a section of curb and gutter in this, you know, certain, you know, one-mile stretch, I, I wonder whether it might be detrimental to the curb and gutter after being installed if as the water is running, you know, east to west, I believe, and then off onto that property, whether it would, you know, deteriorate the curb and gutter if it, if it wasn't, you know, long enough, I guess, Dylan? If that's a, that's a, I understand what I'm trying to say?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shapps, the, the impacts to stormwater would need to be designed by an engineer. Through, and it's a, as the applicant has stated, it's a Montana Department of Transportation road, so they would review that proposal?
Mr. Daley.
So as I understand, the access is going to be from the Pine Street side?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Daley, that is correct.
Okay, and so if the access is from the Pine Street side, they, would the conditions be on both of the, of the work, of the items that we're voting on? Would you add the same condition to both, is my question?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, to follow, so.
If we're following, if we're following Mike's, Mike McLeod's point that we're going to not allow the variance with the condition that they add the sidewalk on the Pine Street side? Do we have to add the same condition to both items that we're voting on?
Oh, do you, you mean, so I, I guess a sample motion from this board could be something like I move to approve the AWARE subdivision application, to recommend approval of the AWARE subdivision application to the council commissioners and the variance request with the conditions stated as staff changing, amending condition number three to include sidewalk on Pine Street. Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, assuming that's, we, we're voting on both in the same vote with that, just as you stated it. So I, I would make that motion that we approve the AWARE Inc. subdivision along with the very denial of the, or approval of the variance request with the condition that sidewalks are installed on Pine Street.
Second. Okay, hang on. So, Mr. Pippenich, does that, does that satisfy the first, does that motion satisfy the first item before us tonight for the subdivision? That motion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I guess if that's your intent, that would, that motion would cover both of the recommendations in front of this board tonight.
Mr. Chairman, that's my intent, to cover both in one motion.
Okay. Is there a second? All right. All those in favor of the motion to approve the substation with, and the variance with the condition that curb and gutter be removed in lieu of sidewalks on Pine Street?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, not to, we're beating this to death, but just for the applicant to know, then they, they're going to go to the council and they can, if they, they're not comfortable with that, they can make that case at that time. Fair enough?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLeod, the applicants, you'll receive a letter, a copy of the letter of this board's recommendation to the council of commissioners with their proposed conditions of approval.
All right. That is all for our first agenda item. Thank you to the applicant. All right, on the second item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan amendment application number 35. An application by the Uptown Master Plan Committee to amend the official Butte Silver Bow comprehensive plan by adopting the Uptown Butte Master Plan as an amendment to the appendix. Could we get a staff presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before Lila gives her presentation, I just want to kind of clarify of what's in front of you on this agenda item tonight. So the Uptown Master Plan and the, the folks that are here tonight have done a lot of public outreach and a lot of work on this plan. And what is in front of you tonight is to basically adopt this as a neighborhood plan in the appendix of the comprehensive plan that you all worked on a couple of years ago. You're going to see a couple of things tonight. Staff's review of this, so state law requires that these neighborhood plans or, or these plans that are adopted as an appendix to your comprehensive plan are in compliance and not contradictory to your adopted comprehensive plan. So staff did a review to show that recommendations coming out of this plan aren't different than the recommendations coming out of our overall comprehensive plan. That is the presentation that Lila's going to give for you tonight. And then I believe the, the Uptown Master Plan folks will also give a presentation, more of the content of the plan. And then the question in front of you tonight is, since this is under board action, they're asking that you recommend approval for adoption to the council commissioners. So I'll let Lila give her portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My second and final presentation tonight is on the comprehensive plan amendment number 35, which is the Uptown Butte Master Plan Committee applying to amend the Butte Silver Bow comprehensive plan by incorporating the Uptown Master Plan into the appendix. The Uptown Master Plan draft was finalized in February of this year, and the committee is proposing to amend the Silver Bow comprehensive plan into the appendix of the Uptown. Reverse that. The Uptown Master Plan into the appendix of the comprehensive plan. The Uptown Master Plan focuses on the Central Business District and the walkable urban core. So that's that red line, and that is the neighborhood per se that this plan focuses on. So the Montana Code annotated states that the comprehensive plan may include one or more neighborhood plans, and they must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Essentially, a neighborhood plan, the Uptown Master Plan should be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it may be incorporated into the appendix if they are. There are seven main principles in the comprehensive plan vision statement, which are designed to guide the goals and policies and implementation measures. And the most relevant of these criteria are evaluated in my presentation. The first is respect Butte Silver Bow's heritage while embracing change. Historic preservation and promotion is a primary element of the Uptown Master Plan. And I picked some relevant priorities of the plan, like rewriting zoning codes, creating design guidelines for infill and new development, renovation and adaptive reuse of buildings in the Uptown Core, marketing Uptown as a unique destination, developing the original mine yard to be a full-time public park as examples of maintaining heritage while embracing change. Second is maintain access to recreational assets for residents and visitors alike. The community outreach for both comprehensive plan and Uptown, Uptown Master Plan drawing up yielded public priorities concerning parks, trails, recreation and visitor tourism experience. One objective of the Uptown Master Plan is to enhance connections to the local regional trail systems between Uptown and the Big Butte Open Space Park. Another objective is to increase the connectivity with the Silver Bow Creek Conservation Area just south of Uptown, which meets the Uptown or the comprehensive plan goal to enhance and maintain unity between Uptown and the flats. Sustain affordability and equity in housing choice and access for all residents. The plan encourages housing density in a walkable distance to the Uptown Core, which would maintain a desirable neighborhood where collaboration exists between residences and businesses. The plan states that there's a need for new housing, which could be accommodated by both remodeled historic buildings and new construction. The Uptown Master Plan cites the comprehensive plan and its Uptown Edge Place type, which exists within that urban core that the Uptown Master Plan focuses on. And these areas which surround the urban core are a focus of housing development, which would make use of existing resources like infill development. The Uptown Master Plan also shows a study that was conducted in 2018 for the public costs of 19 Butte residents who were homeless that year and who frequented the emergency room, jail shelters and/or the crisis house. This estimate was 100 million per, per year compared to 56,000, which would provide stable housing to the same 19 individuals. And to this point, they call for expansion of equality affordable housing is critical for addressing homelessness. Provide economic opportunity through innovation, enhancing Butte Silver Bow's econo- economy by thinking outside the box. The primary goal of the Uptown Master Plan is to target economic growth in an area with existing infrastructure, existing building stock and the center of the Central Business District of Silver Bow County. This is to the point that they establish that urban core boundary. They have intentions to form, fund and maintain a business improvement district that corresponds with the Uptown Core. And with the unique potential for infill development that exists in Butte, specifically Uptown, collaboration between the comprehensive plan and the Uptown Master Plan is critical for guiding appropriate and positive economic growth in the city and county. Finally, ensure a clean and healthful environment for all residents regardless of age, gender, economic status or where you live. I think I slightly missed the mark in my staff report here, so. One of the key headlines of the Uptown Master Plan is Uptown of the Uptown Master Plan is "Uptown Butte: A Clean, Safe, Walkable, and Vibrant Destination." Just rewording the intent of the comprehensive plan up above. The plan broadly intends to promote and enhance the health and wellness of Uptown Butte's urban environment. The plan focus, has a focused objective to improve pedestrian lighting, as well as add more public art uptown, to improve and invigorate the public spaces. The Uptown Master Plan is not contrary to the health and cleanliness of Butte Silver Bow. And that is staff review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Any questions from the planning board to staff? All right. Could the applicant come forward to present their case?
So, I'm Karen Burns, Director of Community Development. I'm gonna turn this presentation over to our Uptown Master Plan Citizens Committee to make the bulk of the presentation tonight. I'll be running the slideshow from the desk, so I'm gonna introduce Shanna Adams, who will kick things off, oh, sorry, Julia, sorry. Julia will kick things off for us, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
My name is Julia Crane. I'm here tonight as a member, volunteer member of the Uptown Master Plan Committee, and I began my participation in the Uptown Master Planning process really by chance and was corresponding with the planning committee, the consultant actually, about my vision for Uptown Butte, and by chance, that was incorporated into the foreword of this particular document. And I wanted to come tonight to say that there are really places in the world that capture imagination and inspire curiosity, and for me, that place has always been Uptown Butte. Throughout my life, I have really relished and thought about what Uptown Butte could become, and I've heard every generation of my family speak about the heart of this city with a fondness and an affection that is often reserved for those that you most dearly love. And for most people in Butte, Uptown and the places within it are treasure troves, where we have shared milestones that have been celebrated, or they are tragedies that have been mourned, or they are moments that we have shared collectively together. Uptown Butte isn't an accidental place. It's a place created very deliberately by commerce and industry for the hardworking and the willing. Laying the foundations of our architectural gems was a bet on the future. A future many said was bleak, and at every turn, we've endured. So, our vision for this place must be deeply aspirational. We owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to our next generation, to a place that makes sure everyone knows that when they give their best, this place will be a modern-day reflection of everything it was, it is today, and it will be in the future. Thanks.
Thanks for having us. I'm Shanna Adams. I'm part of the Uptown Butte Master Plan Association. This slide shows some of the master plan milestones by the numbers. So, we started this process actually four years ago next month. Dave Palmer held a meeting that was billed as the Uptown Vision Meeting, and we had just purchased a business in Uptown, and I thought, awesome, I wanna go, I wanna hear what the vision is. But it was actually the Uptown Visioning Meeting. So, it was a workshop, and it was a facilitated meeting to gather ideas and talk about issues, and out of that meeting, there were four committees that were formed, and one of them was the Master Plan Committee. And you'll see in this presentation that there are actually also four vision statements that came out of that, that kind of tie it back directly to those first four groups. You can see that we've held over fifty meetings, a couple hundred participants, and at the end of this presentation, Karen's gonna talk about the recommendations that have come out of it, and there's about thirty of those, so you can go to the next slide. Okay, so, why are we doing this? Basically, plans work. As you can see from a number of plans that have happened in Butte, a lot of the big projects in Butte were originally identified in a plan, and we took some time to review every plan that's been written in Butte in the last thirty years and kind of tried to evaluate which ones worked, which ones maybe weren't as successful. We kind of looked to the last URA plan, and almost everything identified in there has been done. So, that was one of the reasons, you know, impetus for this plan was to update that plan. But plans work. The community asked for it at that meeting four years ago. And then funding. So, some of the things, some of the recommendations are policy changes that are really easy to implement, easy-ish to implement, and some of them are big expensive projects, and we're absolutely gonna need a plan that's supported by the community to go after funding. And there is so much funding out there right now, especially with the passage of this bipartisan infrastructure bill, the money is available to do the projects we wanna do, and we need this plan to do that. And then why now? Sorry, um, why now? You know, I think Butte is kind of at an inflection point. We've seen so much change, development, redevelopment, interest in Butte, interest in Montana in general, and we wanna make sure that this community is ready with the policies in place so that development happens in a way that we're all happy with, and it's a place that we all wanna be, you know, now and in the future.
I'm Chrissy Kreskowski, and I am part of the Uptown Butte Master Plan Committee. So, the project team wanted to gather input and ideas, identify potential challenges, and discuss issues and solutions with as many community members as possible. So, in order to do this, they collected information in a fairly methodical and strategic way. We held a few large public meetings and many smaller targeted meetings with specific stakeholders in the community. So, I won't go through all of these meetings that were held, but this slide presents the formal meetings that did take place, and we held over fifteen meetings throughout this entire process. The discussion from those meetings really formed the basis of the recommendations in the report, as well as formulated the overall vision. So, the master plan has some pretty big aspirations of what it plans to achieve. While this vision of the master plan started off as fairly broad, based on the steering committee discussions and input from the public, it was boiled down to really four key pillars that really aimed the planning process and the efforts. So, first, the master plan aims to make Uptown Butte a clean, safe, walkable, and vibrant destination in Butte. We really envision Butte, Uptown, to be the shining star of the community. Second, the master plan aspires to be Montana's premier urban core, so not only do we want to, Uptown to be the shining star of the community, we want it to be a highlight of our state. Third, to uphold the integrity of architectural resources in Uptown, as those are key to the revitalization of Butte and its history. And fourth, to embrace our history and tell the stories of Butte, America for current and future generations. We are gonna delve into the master plan vision further, but for now, I wanna turn it over to discuss the key issues that we heard in our community meetings.
Mike Pathausen, also on the Uptown Master Plan Committee. So, in those fifty meetings, we were, we felt we had a good idea of what the community would want, representative of all of our businesses, what we would hope to see in Uptown Butte ourself, but to validate those, we had these fifty meetings, and we saw things like pedestrian safety as being a huge issue, more artwork and more displays, ornamental and architectural lighting, we can all agree, it's probably a little dark uptown, more urban spaces for gathering, more centralized spots that were purposefully designed to get the community together, more green spaces, and then having a successful and vibrant downtown core built around people feeling comfortable to walk around and explore both day and night. So, in this rendering on Broadway and Main, one of the reasons we hired D H M, the firm that did this, is they did a really good job of telling the story of what Butte looks like and can look like visually, and we felt that was important for the community. So, we can see things like curb extensions and lighting, material changes to really clearly identify where the crosswalks are, to narrow the crosswalks and make them not such a long passage, putting up bollards, plaza event spaces, places for public art, things that our community had and has had before and deserves to have again. Proceed to the next slide. So, this is the Montana Studios Building. Butte is plagued with vacant buildings. We've all known this for years at the closure of the mine and moving forward, and we have to act with great intention to change that future. These buildings are, can be perceived as a burden or as a complete blessing. I believe they're a blessing, and beneath this building out comes the history that we didn't even know was there. Most of us didn't like the teal colors, and this is a valuable part of our past, and it's resurfacing in a development project as we speak. And by encouraging development, by encouraging Uptown Butte to continue to prosper, we're gonna see more of this unearthing of our past that we don't even know is there, and we find that to be valuable. And as always, historic preservation is very key and important to all of these buildings, preserving our history and the stories that are told. There is some financial challenges, we understand, in redeveloping. We hope to address those somewhat throughout the plan, such as providing ADA, historical preservation, and fire suppression sprinklers. The archives are a tremendous example of what historical preservation can look like when it's done, and just imagine an Uptown Core that is spilling of the vibrancy and beauty and preservation of this property. We really hope to see this in all corners of the Uptown Business Core. The next slide is Montana and Galena, and one of the things that we heard a lot is wayfinding, just not being able to find your way around Uptown Butte. You can't pick out a lot of destinations. We all have identified that as a problem, and especially our visitors. I have spent the role of tour guide in Uptown Butte more times than I would care to just by being neighborly, and we could solve that problem permanently with a proper wayfinding for our amenities, our treasures that are up there. Where's our trails? Where's our restaurants, our historic sites? What are the names of the headframes I'm looking at? All of those can be addressed by execution of the, of the Uptown Master Plan. And then lastly, Public Works and our Chinese Parade, we have an amazing cultural heritage here, that we really know that this is what makes Butte unique, is the background of the people that built this town, and being able to celebrate that, preserve it, the authentic character of it, to make sure that our heritage doesn't go away with an accidental development project, but in fact is brought out and enhanced throughout every single project as we move forward, and this document would be the prevailing document to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Cassie Wick, a local walkability advocate, and so they gave me the first slide, which is "A Clean, Safe, Walkable, and Vibrant Destination." I've had the great fortune to attend several building-active community institutes. Dylan attended with me as well, and from that, we learned the foundation of a good community is one that you can walk in, that you can navigate, and that you feel safe doing so, and that feels safe to cross streets and be on your streets, and the more that's happening, the more people are spending money in our stores. Also, as a business owner, you can feel the difference when people are walking around, coming in and saying, wow, I didn't know this was here. So, this foundation is that we create a clean, safeable, walk, safe, walkable Uptown. Okay, so, the first part is talking about establishing a business, business improvement district. This can just supplement what the county's already doing with, you know, safety measures, landscaping, just adding to some things that may fall short, just because there's so much to be done in a district, and we know, as we're walking around in these spaces, what makes it feel good to be in there, and if the things that make it feel good don't exist, then we're falling short somewhere, so sometimes these business improvement districts can add to that. And then obviously, pedestrian lighting is something that everyone wants, and you can feel it when you're in it. So, when you're outside the Northwest Energy Building right now, it feels really good to stand outside there at night. We do not have adequate pedestrian lighting anywhere else in our Uptown District, and so as people are walking around, they're not encouraged to be there, and they don't feel safe walking at night when we don't have these fundamental things in place, so a plan for pedestrian lighting is really important. And someone ran into our new store, 'cause there wasn't pedestrian lighting, I think, the other day. Okay, next. So, improving walkability. I walk everywhere that I can so that I don't just say that it's important, but that I see why it's important. This particular slide really got me, because we looked at Park Street and its ability to be redone through MDT, and we fell short. And we fell short because this is a place that is used, lots of people need to cross that street, and we have a diagonal crosswalk there. So, with this plan, implementing things like this, these curb extensions, curb extensions allow someone to know that the pedestrian has an intent to cross that street, and if you know someone is gonna cross, you stop for them, but if you have no idea what they're doing, it's impossible to create a safe pedestrian experience. We know this works, because on Park Street, as it exists right now, we have a curb extension, and when you stand right there, people see you want to cross that street, and they will stop for you nine times out of ten. So, this beautiful rendering also incorporates just the additional safety features of bollards and things that kind of make it feel like it's good to cross. I think adding to this, changing the crosswalks to really look good makes people also go, I wanna cross there, I'm not just gonna cross wherever, which we all do. And in fact, we wrote a SARDA grant to complement what we're doing here, to paint a crosswalk so we can try it out. I like biking, and I think that when we've worked really hard to improve the infrastructure for biking, we have a college in our town, and there are students that come here that want a college experience, and doing that is creating visible places where it feels safe to bike. And I, I didn't see this drawing until today, but I, I thought it was very cool that we would consider, when you paint these bike lanes, they are a thousand times more visible, right, than when they've washed away, and, and we encourage people to use them. People are using these in the winter as well, right now as it stands, and so if we continue with a plan to, to increase our bike ability, we're doing our whole community a service. And also, as a person that works with people that don't have the luxury of driving cars, there is a whole population that their transportation is walking and biking, and we cannot forget that when we make these plans. And then alleys, we had a really cool opportunity where we took the Lizzie Block and we highlighted that alley. Unfortunately, the M and M caused a bit of a issue with that, but when we did that, we could feel the energy in that alley, tons of people behind. Our store used that as a pass-through, and so we have lots of alleys that this can be done in, and we can use all the things that we're doing to create safety. There were concerns about the Lizzie Block, I think that people had heard them, and none of them existed in the end, because it was safer, and it felt good, and now that the lights are not lit in that alley, I don't like it. John and I leave the store, and I'm like, shoot, we can't see anything out here now, but with that added lighting, you create this corridor for people where it feels safer. And also here. Sorry, Karen. And who doesn't wanna hang out there? That looks great. I don't know what I was gonna say there. Okay. It's gorgeous, yeah, and you can't drive through there, so you might as well turn it into a beautiful alley anyway. I think you can do the next slide. Same, creating more plazas and green spaces where people are encouraged to be on our streets. We want people on our streets. When you drive to other communities and there are people on the streets, you wanna stop there and be part of that, and that is the goal of this whole master plan, is that we wanna increase our economic vitality. So, same, curb extensions are a big theme, and I know that there is some concern about them, but they work in places, and they really create a safer atmosphere for pedestrians. And then, next. Oh, and in the winter. Thank you. Okay. I don't know. And then I had never thought of this, but this plan to increase utilization of the original mine yard is incredibly exciting, because as you know right now, if you drive by, the gate is closed, you can't go in there, and probably for different safety reasons and concerns about security, but I was participating in some of the exercise activities they had outside. Every single time that gate was open, three, four people drove in there, 'cause they were dying. dying to get in there. I mean, they just couldn't. And then you'd be like, sorry, you can't stay. And they wanted to be there. That is a public park, and it can be used as such. And so creating access to it from, what street is it? Sorry. From Alaska Street. That's such a beautiful plan that really looks like we celebrate this area that we took time and put love into, to make our favorite place, right? Who doesn't feel so alive when they're at the Folk Fest? And so how do we use that space to get that energy year-round? It's sitting right here in this core district. So all of these are very exciting.
I'm JJ Adams, a member of the Uptown Master Plan Committee. Also do and have worn a lot of hats along the lines of teaching economics at Tech and economic development work in the US Senate and otherwise. The Greek philosopher Socrates said, "By far, the greatest and most admirable form of wisdom is that which is needed to plan and beautify cities and human communities." And in my mind, our community and its gathering places are a living monument to our collective values and efforts. And so that's just how important we think this plan is. So the recommendations in the plan for the, is to, you know, the Uptown neighborhood was built and for a long time enjoyed the position of being not only Montana's, but a regional center of commerce and culture and vitality, right? And what a great gift to our generation that so much of that still exists, that never could be built in today's era. And so the plan calls to dust off that legacy and regain our rightful place as Montana's premier core. And the recommendations laid out in the plan are to improve occupancy, that's no big secret. Market, the Uptown Core is a unique destination. Believe it or not, a lot of people love old buildings. And they really, and when those people find Uptown Butte, they get excited. And they want to come back, and they want to spend time here, and they want to spend their money here. And so that's really important. They want to do business here. Marketing to attract more retail and shopping is also important. You know, the beautiful smile of Uptown has some missing teeth, and we'd like to fill those in. Promote and attract useful local services. And, you know, there's a number of those that support this vitality. Build entertainment and activity scene, give us more things to do in Uptown. And that's really what, you know, the, basically two elements here, right? You need a built space and people occupying that space. And it, the truth is, I, you know, I've been fortunate to travel quite a bit, and it doesn't really have to be money. It doesn't, you know, you don't need a ton of money. You just need to be conscious about, you know, develop, like clearly defining a built space about, and communicating through that built space, hey, this is where you can sit and hang out, this is where you go to see some entertainment, that sort of thing. Increasing housing and walkable distance that supports the urban core. From my diverse background, I would suggest that this might be, you know, maybe the most important. And the reason that I say that is, you know, we have a supply and a demand problem across a lot of these issues. And residents create demand. You also end up in economics, there's this broken window, this whole thing about, in economic, people take better care of things that they own and occupy, right? And housing supports that. And there's quite a bit of work in urban, I'm trying to get up to speed on all this because the urban planning thing is a little bit new to me, but that says many of the greatest communities and cities and towns in history have, there's a magical formula of a couple of blocks. It's 14, 15, 100 feet, something like that. And this is this walkable idea. After that, after a certain distance, people start looking for an alternative mode of travel, that sort of thing. But anyway, so I just underscore that point, that recommendation. And then, and then some zoning changes that can facilitate these great ideas. Okay, and then in this next slide, the Italian journalist Calvino said, "Cities like dreams are made of desires and fears." And so in this slide, what I see is a once-great city. To me, this image represents fears, fear of not realizing the potential of our community, fear that Uptown will continue to decline faster than it renews, and fear that I personally am not doing all I can to make my community what it should be. And then this image, which is the same photo with some improvements, to me represents a great city. Represents desire and dreams, desire to live and work in a place that is cared for and safe for my kids, that represents a dream. Our Uptown that is beautiful and is vibrant is the residents and our values. So I'll just leave you with one more, clearly I like quotes. Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings and thereafter they shape us." Thank you.
I'm Ginger Garf, and JJ said something earlier that resonated with me. People love old buildings, and when they see the old buildings in Butte, they come here. And I'm a relative newcomer, I've lived here a year, and that is one of the reasons that we moved to Butte, among many, but it was a big one. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about the integrity of the current architectural resources and what needs to be done to maintain that integrity with new construction, infill. Everything that makes Butte unique from a physical standpoint are the buildings. And so what we're looking to do here, you know, there's, we've got recommendations under this vision statement. Market and promote Butte as a historic landmark district in Uptown. That's already being done, but the number of people that I've told, you know, family, friends from out of town that, hey, this is the largest national historic district that there is. They're like, no, really? Yeah, it's cool. Preserve the character of the Uptown Core. This is, this is super key. The reason that people want to come Uptown is because it's cool. And so maintaining the character of the buildings that are there and establishing design guidelines to encourage new development to maintain that same architectural language. It's not difficult to do. Northwest Energy has done it, you can see that in this photo. They've managed to put a very modern, brand-new, large building smack in the, you know, key intersection of Uptown, and it looks great. And it doesn't feel out of place. Develop a historic preservation website. People don't know what is out there. They don't know where to go if they have questions about grant funding, what's available, what do I need to do if my building is listed on the historic rolls? What can I do? What can I not do? What should I do? Who do I talk to? All of those things are currently available, but they're not all clearly in one place that's easy to find. The whole process needs to be transparent, obvious, so that anyone who owns a building Uptown, or who is interested in building, owning a building Uptown, knows where to go and who to talk to. Identify, fund, develop, and maintain a historic resource inventory map and database. There's a lot of information out there already in our GIS system. There's not an easy way for the public to access that. So being able to go in there and look up an address and learn the history of the building, learn maybe who owns it, maybe what businesses are in it, how old it is, what it was used for originally, all of those sorts of things. And also to find out what the opportunities are on that, on that lot, perhaps. And then, yeah, the key part of this is establishing design guidelines. And the, I was confused by the fact that there were no design guidelines when we moved here. I'm an architect, so I was interested in that, and I could not believe that there weren't. So what design guidelines will do is encourage the maintenance of the existing building fabric Uptown, so that when you walk down the street, you're not jarred by inappropriate architectural infill. And so this, some of this has already been started. There's a RFP out to redevelop the current zoning codes that are, what, 30, 40, 50 years old? They haven't been rewritten, 45? Yeah. So it's time. And without those tools, people are able to do whatever it is that they want, and that could lead to problems. I think we've seen some of that happen up there already. This is an example of a historic preservation website in a different jurisdiction, but the city-county is starting to work on, on the current website. And so soon, our hope is that you'll be able to go to, it's a one-stop shop. See everything you need to see, find out everything you need to find, all of the contacts and everything like that. So I think that all of these items put together just will really lead to a better Uptown for everyone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, thanks so much for your time and attention this evening. My name's Courtney McKee, and I've only had the privilege of being in Butte for almost 21 years now. As a resident, a full-time resident of Montana, I have three really magical moments from my early time in Montana. The first was seeing the Mission Mountains roll out in front of me for the very first time. The second was coming down the hill and seeing Flathead Lake spill out in front of me. And the third was the time I got off the interstate and drove into Uptown Butte, which was the weekend that it became my, my home. I love this place. And that view, to me, is every bit as magical as, as those natural landscape moments that make Montana so special. I'm incredibly proud to own a piece of that Uptown infrastructure. My husband and I own a building, you'll see in a couple of slides here. That building stood for 100 years before us, and when we bought it, we recognized that it was our privilege and responsibility to make sure that that building would be ready to stand the next 100 years. I'm really committed to this place. I'm really in love with it. And so I get to talk to you a little bit about telling the stories of Uptown Butte. Folks in this community do an incredible job being welcoming and being gracious. But that works when you get in conversation with someone one-on-one. We don't do that nearly as well, just through our, through our wayfinding. And so what we're excited to talk a little bit about here are the ways that we make Uptown itself serve that really gracious, welcoming role that each of us do so well personally. One of the concepts that we have here is our gateways into Uptown, right? We, we can do all of this incredible work to make the space walkable, but if we don't let you know what it is you're looking for, or tell you when you've arrived, how are you supposed to know? So we're excited to put gateways to let people know where they find Uptown Butte and help them understand what it looks like when they get there. It is a, it is entirely a coincidence that, that this slide here happens to be my building. I am in love with every single one of these gateway concepts, but what a gorgeous thing to welcome people this beautifully to Uptown, to let them know that they have arrived and that they are very welcome to be here. You know, these, these gateways look as gorgeous as the buildings themselves. And when we think about, you know, what our community can look like in and for the next 100 years, something this welcoming and lovely is, is such a gorgeous and appropriate Karen, our next slide. So we have a cool opportunity to do this even at the bottom of Montana Street. Imagine what it would look like to get off the interstate and be welcomed like this, told that you are on the right route to get into Uptown Butte. I think it's just such an incredible opportunity, again, to just be welcoming right from the moment people get off the, off the interstate. As I understand, the number is, we have about 21,000 people driving past Butte every day in the summer. Imagine how wonderful it would be to direct a few more of them off the interstate and guide them and welcome them into our Uptown community. We're talking to about, thanks Karen, about a welcome center where we have that opportunity for that human interaction, for the place to ask questions, to help navigate your way around Uptown, to be curious and have folks help you find your next adventure, your next stop on your time in Uptown Butte. I know that many of our local businesses work very hard to train our staff to serve in this role. Folks come in our door, and we want to pass them off to their next experience. As business owners, we do this really well. But as JJ said, the smile is missing a few teeth, and it would be really lovely to be able to, to do a great job being in Uptown, welcoming folks, being clearly identifiable as those individuals who are here to help welcome and wayfind with, with our guests. And then finally, we're in huge support of the development of a Butte and Anaconda National Historic Park. This is an incredibly great way to continue to ensure that these buildings are protected, that this landscape stays this incredible treasure that we are so lucky to, to see and live in and work in every day. Thank you.
So we just wanted to get to the, I can just sit, that's fine. Thanks, Shanna. She'll make a stand, come and switch me. So we're to the point of, you know, you've heard a lot about what the ideas are put forth in this plan, how we develop this plan. It is an amazing tool, I think. But what's a plan unless you try to figure out how you're going to do something with it, right? And so the last part of our plan is our implementation and funding strategies. And as Shanna said at the beginning, you know, we've created over 30 different projects or recommendations. And some, you know, we look at as pretty, easy to do. They don't cost a lot of money. It's organizing, it's, it's putting people together that want to work on things. And so I won't go through these in detail, and I don't expect you to try to read these, but there are our goals associated with each one of those main things that we talked about, Montana's premier urban core, what we do to promote that and develop that and work on that. Each one of these recommendations and projects has an implementation summary, a schedule, who's going to be responsible for that. We're actually doling out work to people and organizations that need to help get these things done. We've identified what the resources are that are needed to get these things done, and what the potential funding source is for these individual projects or recommendation. And then we also prioritize- And then we also prioritize those, whether they're high, medium, or low, basically. This is a living and working document that we're going to continue to work on, and so things will shift possibly. I love how on this slide that we called out in yellow, hey, anybody want to come help? Volunteers are going to be needed for this. And one of the questions I was asked at a council meeting not long ago when we were presenting an update on the plan is, well, how are we going to get all this done? Who's going to be involved in this? And I looked at every single commissioner and said, all of you are. You're all going to be involved in this, and I'm going to look at all of you guys and say, whoever wants to be involved in this, if you have any interest, you're all going to be involved in this. It's our responsibility as a community to get these things done. And so we're really, really excited about the things that we've identified and the things that we can do. Some are policy changes, some are programmatic changes, others are visions and things that we will drive through when projects come up. You know, is there a construction project that's going to happen? What can we do to take advantage of that, that's going to work toward a goal that we've established in this plan? So very excited to kick things off and get things started with this. The priorities of those thirty things that we talked about, I'm just going to read through these really quick. The first one we, we identified was the pedestrian lighting. This came up in every single focus group, every single meeting that we had on every committee, as something that not only enhances our walkability, our beauty, our friendliness of Uptown, but it also crosses over into that safety. So a pedestrian lighting plan for Uptown Butte is, is imperative. Establishing our public art committee for murals and public art, that's something that I've had a lot of interest in already. This hasn't even started yet, but I've got people saying, I want to serve on this committee, they want to be a part of this. The wayfinding and gateways, you've talked about that. We're already starting to work because of our partnership, you know, in Butte Silver Bow about the zoning codes and creating design guidelines, that's, that's happening. Establishing a business improvement district is something we have kicked around for years. It's something that we need to, to get off the dime and get going, and I think we've got the momentum to get it done this time. All those intersection pedestrian safety improvements, just, you can see what that does if you are able to implement even a fraction of what, we want to go for all of it, but if you're able to implement part of those things, you're going to see a huge difference. Marketing our Uptown Butte as a unique destination, that original mine yard creating better access is just one of the beginning steps for that. And then a welcome center uptown. So those are the priorities that we picked out of those thirty. But I think those are things that we can all start working on right away. Next steps, obviously, after we're done talking to you guys tonight, we hope to do a brief presentation to the Council of Commissioners if you do see fit to move this forward with a full recommendation to adopt as part of the comprehensive plan. And once that's done, it's formal, and that means we're all going to go to work, even though we've been doing that for four years, if you can believe that. We had a couple of things happen, and they're, you know, like a pandemic and a few other things, but we're ready to rock and roll on this now, and we're very excited to see some of these things start. So with that, we're, we're finished.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, everyone. Really nice presentation, well done. All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't, I don't have any questions, I just want to just express my gratitude to all the hard work you guys have done on all this. Know how busy you guys are with your lives and stuff, and definitely appreciate like the, the passion. Joking with Mr. Pathfauz, and you know, we've got the passionate Bozeman kid, and then I tease him the Carol kid, like, my God, he, he fires me up when he talks about it and, and still will tease him about Carol as much as I can. However, honestly, seriousness, appreciate you guys so much. Hats off.
Any other questions, comments? All right. At this time, we will call for proponents for recommendation of adoption of the Uptown Butte Master Plan.
Members of the committee, Pat Prendergast, ten seventeen West Porfree. I'm also had the privilege of serving on the Master Planning Committee these past years, and I am so impressed with the passion and enthusiasm and the leadership of this group. I think it's a well-thought-out, well-developed, and comprehensive plan, and I would sincerely hope that you would consider endorsing and recommending this plan move forward. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, Todd Hoare. I'm here as a citizen and as a professional on the Butte Silver Bow, I'm the ADA Coordinator for Butte Silver Bow. So I've served on this committee in kind of both capacities at some of these meetings. I mean, you guys saw how, how comprehensive this was. What I wanted to do is just remind you guys of how much work you've put into adopting the transportation update plan, how you've adopted the comprehensive plan. A lot of these items that are readdressed in this are things that you've already approved and that you feel is vital to the community. So I think what this does, that those other plans don't, is it actually has an implementation strategy that those others, I mean, they do in a sense because each department is looking at them, but these guys detailed out who, how, when, getting grant money. So I, I think supporting this is just supporting stuff you've already supported in the past. So, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm John Wick. I have no real association with this group outside of following Cassie up here tonight. I also wish I had a quote from Socrates at the tip of my tongue, but I also don't have that. However, you know, I think if you guys walk around Uptown, you feel some sort of momentum as if we're waking up from this pandemic or whatever, hopefully we are, and things are starting to move again and chug again. And I think that this plan gives us a chance to control our own destiny with, with things like intention and direction of money and, and resources, and creating the Butte that we want to see in the future, not somebody else coming in here and doing this for us. It gives us the guidelines to, to kind of create the community that we want. Yeah. And I think this is a no-brainer on my end. We're opening another, an entire another business in, in two or three weeks at forty-three West Park Street. And, and there's a reason why we're doing that. We feel this momentum, and, and we've got the, the faith, and luckily, we've got the capacity to do that, and we want to contribute to the community that, that we all dream about. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Like, Cassie Wick, I would like to apologize for my guest. Really, I think what I want to say more than anything is, I have cared about walkability probably, someone lit a fire in me probably ten years ago, and I was like, why aren't we doing this? And this group formed, and it is so passionate, and it is so alive, and it would be so problematic if we shut that energy down, because these are powerful people that care about this community at its core. And I don't want to see that go away because it feels better than it ever has, and we have so much room to grow from that.
All right. Second call for proponents. Third call for proponents. All right, any, first call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third call for opponents. All right. At this time, we'll close the portion of the public meeting and start any board discussion. I'd just like to start, for one, I am a part of the Uptown Butte Master Plan Association, so I will recuse myself from voting on this. But number two, I just, in addition to all these people that are very enthusiastic about the plan, there was a huge community outreach in all of the meetings that we had, and I think it's important to know that there was a hu, the community was very excited about this plan as well. So, Ms. Jack Shaw.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to this committee. I had the privilege of sitting in on some of the meetings that you held, and I've listened to the group talk a few different times. What an amazing group of individuals that are very passionate about our Uptown area. I'm so proud of all of you and your hard work, and I'm excited to see what comes out of all of this. Based on that, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Thirty-Five to adopt the Uptown Master Plan as an appendix of the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great.
Can I make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, Mr. Cloud.
Since these people made us miss the Gonzaga game tonight. They're going on and on. I've been back thirty years, was, I'm from Butte, obviously, and back thirty years, and we've had to overcome a lot of things. Our planning directors from Anaconda, you know, we're overcoming it. But one thing that's always been said in this town is we need young people, new people, new ideas. And I think most everybody that stood up other than my sophomore-year biology teacher, Mr. Prendergast, is, is from somewhere else, and they're young, and I think it's awesome. And I think it's the way forward. So, and I think we'll overcome our director, he's doing a great job, so. But I just want to say, I do appreciate the passion and everybody, the effort you put in, and I think that's what's changed in our community, and I think it's in a good way. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, that concludes our two agenda items. Is there any other business?
Mr. Chairman, there's no other business.
You're sure?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we'll take a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.